2022 meeting, as always, the invitation. I'm going to turn that over to Commissioner St. Simon to introduce his person.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have with us this evening Pastor Marty Benfield. We'll come right on up, Mr. Benfield. You know, you always have opportunities. Occasionally you get a call for not divide assistance, but commissioner assistance or community assistance. And we spoke on the phone about a property issue and put him in touch with Brian and talked, and he said, if I can help you, anytime, let me know. And I said, man, what an opportunity. So, on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, welcome to our board meeting, and we thank you so much for coming and offering an invitation.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the invitation and the chance to do this. For those that are so inclined, please bow your heads and pray with me. Father, we come here tonight, first of all, to give you thanks for your great love and mercy. We are blessed beyond belief as a nation, and we are not worthy of the great love and gifts of your grace. We know, Lord, that your word teaches us to honor those in authority. Romans 13:1 says, "Let everyone be subject to the governing authorities and let no authority except God, which God has established." The authority that exists has been established by God. So tonight, we are here to honor all those that you have placed in authority. We also know that your word teaches us to pray for all those, even and especially those in authority. So we're here tonight, Lord, to pray for wisdom, for guidance during this meeting tonight, that you would lead through your spirit, bless each one here in attendance, and that these in charge make the decisions for this community that will glorify you and that your will would be done in this community. As Daniel once prayed, "God, hear the prayers and petitions." Lord, look with favor in this place of meeting. Give ear, our God, and hear. Open your ears and open your eyes and see. We do not make these requests of you because of our righteousness, but because of your great mercy. Lord, listen, forgive, Lord, hear, and act. And we ask all these things in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Please join me in a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there's nobody signed up for informal comments tonight, so we'll go to item number 22-081, recognition of service of Catherine Brown, Public Communications Director. And Mark's going to handle this for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is certainly bittersweet. Catherine joined Union County in 2019 as our first Public Communications Director. Shortly after becoming county manager, one of the strategic goals that I had been working on was public communications, and more specifically, how do we tell Union County's story. Union County is a wonderful place, as I think we can all attest to, and so often in the past, it's been that we really haven't told our story very well to those in the county and those that are in the region. So putting together a public communications team was a first priority some 36 months ago. Catherine Brown was selected as the Public Communications Director, and during her tenure with us, she assembled a team of talented communications staff. She oversaw the redesign of the county's website, an important way that we communicate with the general public, and spearheaded a branding initiative that brought us a great product focused on a brand-new brand with the tagline, you know, "Plant Your Future." Many of you have seen that. Additionally, she and her team have won numerous awards at the state and national level for their work in communication, specifically during the COVID pandemic. And I will say, from firsthand experience, when you are trying to manage through an event such as a pandemic in the early stages of that event, when there are so many unknowns and you're trying, as a leader in the organization, trying to pay attention to all of the operational needs, making sure that we are continuing to provide all of the basic services that the general public expects us to provide, thinking about how we are communicating with the public sometimes would fall through the crack. And quite honestly, I do not know what we would have done without a public communications group as talented as the one that Catherine Brown led and assembled. Her contributions to Union County are greatly appreciated, and she will leave a lasting impression, and we are grateful for everything that she's done for us. Catherine, as you can tell by my comments so far, is leaving the organization to go to the private sector, and it is a promotion for her, by the way. And that's a testament to the skill and the professionalism that Catherine brings. We wish her every success in the future. And Catherine, I believe, did you have some words you wanted to share with the commission?
If that's okay.
Absolutely.
I'm not short of words. Good evening, Chairman Ray, Vice Chairman Williams, Commissioners, thank you so much. I really appreciate you taking the time to do this recognition. It's really special to me and to my family, so I appreciate that so much. It was truly an honor to serve the residents of Union County. I can't say enough about this leadership team, Mark, Michelle, Patrick, Brian. They, it was such an honor to work with them, to work with people who are trying to get something done and get it done right and solve problems and do it with all of their awesome senses of humor that converged together. That made it a lot of fun. So I know that Public Communications was able to accomplish a lot during that time, but we would not have been able to do it without them and without that awesome team, who a few of them are here, Fran Ayers, Nicole, Liz, and Chris Mumpower in the back, and then a few not able to be here. So I have a couple of special recognitions, and I'm just going to keep going. I'm sure Patrick's like, how long is she going to take? Settle in. I'm just kidding.
Three minutes, guys.
He's going to put the timer on. Chris can put the timer on. Chris put the timer on me, thank you. Okay, so I have two recognitions. One, Liz Cooper, she is the best partner that I could have had to go through what Mark talked about. Michelle Lancaster, my other support, guidance person who said, yep, go for it, and I'm like, ooh, really? Okay, yes, let's do it. So I'm really looking forward to watching where they're going to take the team. There's a bunch of other people, but I'm not going to go through all of them. But I will say, I do want to kind of speak to the EOC experience, and that is an experience that I'll carry with me for the rest of my life. And I'm working with emergency management, Don Moye, Andrew Ansley, working with public health, Dennis Joyner, Michelle McGrath, and everyone in the organization, salt of the earth, the best people, and this has been such a rewarding experience. And I appreciate your confidence in me, and I appreciate the opportunity. So again, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you, Liz Cooper. So I wish you nothing but the best and as you continue to grow and prosper as a county and an organization. Thanks.
Good luck in your new venture.
Thanks.
Okay, 22-057, February Service Awards and Retirements. The Employee Recognition Program acknowledges employees for full-time continuous service at the following intervals: five, 10, 15, 20, 25, and 30 years of service. We'd like to recognize the following employees for full-time continuous service with Union County Local Government. Sherri Horn, Community Support and Outreach, five years. Caleb Barnett, Sheriff's Office, five years. Anthony Mason, Sheriff's Office, five years. Kendra Griffin, Human Services, Business Ops, 10 years. Mark Helm, Sheriff's Office, 10 years. Jennifer Crumpler, General Services, 15 years. Wendy Sanderson, Health, 15 years. Christopher Black, Sheriff's Office, 15 years. Sheila Gregory, Community Support and Outreach, 20 years. Kimberly Rollins Price, Public Works, 20 years. Kevin Benton, Sheriff's Office, 25 years. Monica Smith, Social Services, 25 years. Kathy Farley, Building Code Enforcement, 10 years. That was a retirement. Patricia Anius, Community Support and Outreach, 18-year retirement. And Gracie Caldwell, Social Services, 25 years, retirement. Thank you to all our employees. Okay, now we go to the consent agenda. Does anybody want to modify, or do I hear a motion to approve as presented?
Motion to approve as presented.
All right, have a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Brian's trying to get your attention.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a suggestion, if you might consider it. If you wouldn't mind considering moving the rezoning decisions of 045, 046, and 047, so that those decisions can be made, anyone here can hear those decisions, and then we'll do the Yadkin update after that. Would you be willing to consider that request?
Okay. I'll make a motion to move the wastewater treatment capacity monthly update and the Yadkin Regional Water Supply Project update to after 2247, which is the rezoning petition of Steadly. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, Bjorn, you want to come present the first one?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Manager Watson. This is the rezoning for CZ 2021-007, Blue Star. Public hearing was held two weeks ago. This is the rezoning for approximately 573 acres south of Parkwood School to rezone from RA 40 to RA 200 with conditions in order to construct a solar farm. The conditions are the same as what was presented at the public hearing, although the applicant has made an offer for decommissioning plan, but that is not included as a part of it. All right, I'm sorry, not decommissioning plan, but a decommissioning bond. So I will scroll through the slides and go to the recommendation, which again was for approval, consistent with the planning board, due to the use intensities, consistent with the adopted land use map, and the lack of noise, light, or traffic impacts, and will not substantially injure the values of adjacent or abutting properties. So happy to answer any questions you may have about this request, but the request is to either approve or deny the rezoning.
Any questions, comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we deny the rezoning petition of CZ 2021-007 to rezone the property appearing on tax map as parcels 04-282-006, 04-255-002, 04-255-004, and U4-225-003F in the Buford Township from RA 40 to R200 with conditions, and to adopt the consistency and reasonableness statement for denial.
Any discussion? Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I've struggled some with this one, but I'm inclined to support the rezoning. Our planning staff recommended it for approval. Our planning board unanimously recommended it for approval. I think when you look at possible alternative uses of the site, I think the proposed use makes a lot of sense. There's a good deal of business personal property that will get taxed by the county, and I think none of this development will be an impact to our roads or to Union County public schools. I would politely encourage Commissioner Helms to perhaps withdraw his motion and consider instead a motion to table to give our legal staff time to perhaps develop some requirements along the lines of bonding. You know, when this gets broken down, what might those bonding requirements look like? That is an important element to me for potentially approving something like this. But again, I'm inclined to, you know, to look at this favorably.
Commissioner Helms.
I respectfully would request that we continue with my motion.
Okay, we have a motion to deny. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
4-1. 2246, rezoning petition, RZ 2021-008, Crane.
Gentlemen, this is also a rezoning that went through a public hearing two weeks ago. This is an RZ case, meaning that is a straight rezoning. There are no conditions associated with it. It is a request to rezone from RA 40 to RA 15 in order to allow it to be split into two lots. And here's a survey of the property showing that it is feasible to split into two lots. At the meeting two weeks ago, a request was made to explore having septic as an option because of the length of sewer that had to be extended to serve these properties. The applicant did not submit a perk test for the properties. And scrolling down to the staff recommendation, the planning board recommended denial and staff recommended denial. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Anybody want to offer a motion? Commissioner Rushen.
Yes, I'm just looking for the right one here. I would like to make a motion to deny the zoning petition, RZ-2021-008, to rezone the property appearing on the tax map as parcel 06-204-011D in the Sandy Ridge Township from RA 40 to RA 15, and adopt the consistency and reasonableness statement for denial.
All right, we have a motion. Any discussion? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor of denying the rezoning?
Aye.
All opposed? So it was unanimous. Okay, moving on to the next one, 22-47, Bjorn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This is also a rezoning that was heard at a public hearing two weeks ago. This is a CZ case, meaning that there are conditions associated with the rezoning request. This is a request to rezone a little more than six acres on NC 75 between Monroe and Mineral Springs from RA 40 to B4 with conditions in order to build mini storage buildings on an existing commercial site. Conditions are listed below. Site plan is as follows, so there's an existing rental home on site that would be demolished, and mini storage would be installed on the western side of the site. It meets our development standards. And I will go to the staff recommendation, staff recommended approval, as well as the planning board, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Commissioner Helms.
Yes, we discussed this last time. There were some requirements for tree planting that were included in that. And my understanding, the trees that were cut down were prior to this rezoning request several years. I'm just asking what the status is.
Commissioner Helms, they called me, there was a mistake. Mr. Steadly made a mistake. They had a flyover of it a month before he applied or something like that.
Yeah, we have aerial photos that show that the trees have been cut down several weeks after the application.
Right. So he's willing to go ahead with plant a tree, save a life, and all that.
Mr. Chairman, then may I make a motion to approve the rezoning petition, CZ 2020-009, to rezone the property appearing on tax map as parcel 09-351-024 in the Monroe Township from RA 40 to B4 CZ, and to adopt the consistency and reasonableness statement for approval.
Okay, any questions? We have a motion. Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Brian, we'll go back to 22-053.
Yes, sir. So we actually do not have a presentation for the information on the wastewater. That is just for information only and in your packets. We do, however, have a presentation from John Schudek on the Yadkin update.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, no problem.
John, you're sporting a different look.
I aim to please, sir. Chairman Ray, Vice Chairman Williams, Commissioners, Mr. Manager, thank you for the time this evening. I'm going to be giving you an update on our Yadkin Regional Water Supply Program. So I'll give you a brief overview of the project. We'll talk about the raw water infrastructure project, the finished water infrastructure project. We'll touch on the budget as well as the schedule, and then I'll close out with a fun fact. So the overall project, as you all recall, includes an intake and pump station on Lake Tillery here. We've got approximately 30 miles of raw water transmission main shown in that purplish dashed line. It goes from Norwood all the way through Stanley County down to the new water treatment plant, which is shown in the magenta circle there. And then the east-west line is the finished water transmission main. Important to note that that finished water transmission main does connect to our existing system at five different locations along its route, so that's at Old Camden, Morgan Mill, Sykes Mill, 601, and Ridge Road. And then it ultimately terminates at the intersection of Seacrest Shortcut and Rocky River Road. The kind of purple short dashed line you see running north-south, that's a separate project that is underway in the design phase right now. That's the east side transmission main or 762 pressure zone main, as you might hear me say. I kind of use those interchangeably, but that's a future project, 24-inch line that'll bring water to the Marshville and Wingate areas.
John, if I might, with regard to that particular line, and I may be getting ahead of you in the presentation, but in the design of the water treatment plant, anticipating that line being put in north to south, headworks were installed or included in that project. So when it comes time to put in that line, it's turn the valve and the water flows. Is that correct?
It's not exactly that simple, but yes, we are making--
That's the reason I brought it up.
We are making provisions to accommodate that project in the future, and yes, you were getting ahead of me in the presentation. I will touch on that briefly. Just a preview on the budget numbers here. We had $274.1 million in a guaranteed maximum price across the program, and that's against an overall program budget of just short of $304 million. The project was slated for substantial completion in May of 2023. That was predicated on us giving notice to proceed in August, September timeframe of 2020. We've got final completion in November of 2023. So we'll start out with the raw water project. As you can see in the upper right here, you've got the rendering of the pump station that's on Lake Tillery in Norwood. And then in the lower left, you'll see the schematic of the pipeline alignment that runs from Norwood generally east-west over to Oakboro, and then kind of south and west into Union County onto the water treatment plant site. The colors that you're seeing on the graphic of the transmission main, green indicates that the pipeline's been installed, yellow means that it's underway, and white means that it has not yet been started. So you can see we've made start on a significant portion of that pipeline with roughly 20% to 30% of the pipeline installation actually being completed at this time. The overall contract limit is $157.6 million, and that's comprised of the $156.2 million GMP, as well as an additional contingency allowance, which was $1.4 million on this side of the program. To date, we haven't had any change orders on the raw water project, and we are projecting substantial completion for the end of June of 2023, as opposed to the initial target in the contract of May. So we're running about two months behind, and I'll talk about that a little bit more when we get to the schedule slide. So I'm just going to run you through some progress photos of the activity that's been going on in the raw water project. Here, you're seeing the intake site, looking out obviously towards the lake, the wet well in the foreground. You can see the short brick building kind of lost in between some equipment and a skid steer there in the background. That's the existing Norwood facility that is actually still in service while we're doing this project, so doing a good job working around that facility. And the construction of the wet well is largely complete at this point. So one of the activities that had to take place before we could proceed with finishing out the inside of the wet well was the installation of the pipe out into the lake itself, and we had to do this via microtunnel. So you can see here, we've got a rather sharp-looking fellow there on the right that you may recognize, but that is the microtunnel boring machine. What that does is the head turns, the head is on the left side of the photo there, that rotates and basically chews through the material that's in front of it. It's pushed from behind, advances through, chews-- the material that's in front of it. It's pushed from behind, advances through, chews up that material. And that, that material, water is actually brought into the machine through a hose to fluidize that, that material that's been chewed up, and it's returned up to the surface. This particular microtunnel is about 300 feet long, and it daylights on the bottom of the lake at a depth of about 30 feet from the surface. So what I described, you can see the, on the left side here, you can see that steel pipe that's being advanced out into the lakes. So the microtunnel is in front of that, chewing through that material and the pipe being pushed behind it. And the photo here on the right that you see is the dewatering equipment. So as that fluidized material is brought to the surface, it's pushed through this particular machine through a series of screens where the solids are removed, and then the water's returned to the microtunnel machine. So it's a closed-loop system. So we're not returning water with lots of stuff in it back to the lake.
John, have y'all started tunneling yet?
The tunneling operation is actually complete. So it took them about two weeks to do it.
When it broke through, what happened? Was it sealed off? I kept, I had trouble thinking about, like Jed Clampett, you know?
No, it's, it's not quite like that. It's actually quite an uneventful thing. You really don't, don't see much because it's, it's under the water surface. So it daylights on the bottom. They cap that pipe off in the, in the wet well. And then what they've got to do is, well, one, they had to prepare the lake bed to receive it, which is what these photos are. They had to launch a barge, get an excavator on it. So what you see here is the, where the garni team unloaded their barge, assembled it in the lake, and then got the excavator onto it and, and trucked it on down to the intake site. This is right at Highway 27 at the Lake Tillery Bridge. Oops. And that long-reach excavator, you can see it there dipping down into the lake, and it's basically creating a landing pad for, for that microtunnel. And in the background of the picture, you can see kind of a dumpster back there. And that's where the spoils any material that they remove. And I realize it's hard to see there, but that, that's where all the spoiled material goes. And then it's hauled back to land and hauled off and disposed of. Itchy slide finger, I guess. So the next thing we, we had to do is, is that microtunnel was advanced out into the lake, that 300 feet. You can see it, it's generally going from that intake or the, excuse me, the wet well, out to where you see the barge parked there. So it's at a bit of an angle. So it's tunneled out approximately that 300 feet, and it's getting ready to daylight. So as that, when the barge went back, offloaded the excavator, they unloaded a crane so that they could actually pull it out of the water. And in order to do that, we had to do a couple of things. First of all, we had to send a diver down there because the pipe is attached to the back of that microtunnel. It's welded onto it. So they have to physically cut it loose underwater. So they've got a diving team that goes out there and does that. And once that, that machine has been cut loose, they attach the rigging from the crane and hoist it up to the surface. So you can see, it looks like it's in a lot worse condition than when we started. It was all shiny and new, had some nice stickers, everybody got to sign it. That lasted for about five minutes. Maybe first four or five feet that the, the microtunnel machine got, and all that was ground off. But they, they pull this out, they get it all cleaned up, refurbish any parts that need to be replaced, and then it's on to the next job. So what you see here, and Chairman Ray, you can see in the picture on the left, you can see there's, there's a cap on that pipe. So that is isolated from the lake so they don't, you know, obviously have water pouring into the wet well before we're ready for it. But now they can work on the remaining formwork and concrete work that's got to go on in the bottom of the wet well. And what that is, you can see that here in the picture on the right, what that is, are, they're forming up and pouring the bays where the pumps are going to sit. So these are isolated from each other, so they're not quote-unquote fighting each other for, for water. They're also pouring a baffle block, which you can see right in front of the, the intake pipe. What that does is it slows that velocity to near zero. So it's a very still environment and helps avoid any hydraulic conditions which may lead to adverse pump operation.
John, when the, the tunnel actually went 300 feet out before it made daylight at the bottom of the lake, but the, the actual pipe itself extends further out into the lake that's just elevated up off of the, the lake bed at that point?
That is correct. So the microtunnel, tunneled on out, and the, the intake pipe itself will continue for several hundred feet further, and it'll be supported on H-piles, which will be driven into the lake bed itself. So that work is forthcoming. Right now, the pipe is just where it's at.
John, I will tell you, I should have told you earlier, on Facebook, people that have homes over there, there was all kind of explanations about what the crane and the excavator, it was pulling up the B-52 bomber. There was gold in the lake and stuff like that. So it was funny.
It was nothing that exciting. It was simply a piece of construction equipment. But I'm glad to see imagination at work. All right. So in addition to that microtunnel work, they're still working on the intake site doing other things. What you see here on the left is some 48-inch diameter steel piping that will feed the surge tank that's on site. And this is a, this is a piece of equipment that's in place in case there's a catastrophic failure of the, of the pumps or anything like that that creates a back pressure wave, gives that system relief so you don't break a lot of things out in the system, valves, burst pipe, that type of thing. So on the, what you'll see, what you see here is, is the angle moving to the right on the picture. That'll connect to the pump discharge header, and those vertical stubs connect to the surge tank itself. So you can see I'm lowering it into that excavation via crane, and then you can see it formed up with some rebar for a future concrete port to encase that pipe. They also continue to work on the raw water transmission main. What you see on the left here is just a pretty typical cleared right-of-way that's been generally restored. On the right, you can see them actually working on installing the pipeline, and they're crossing the nose of a pond here just off New Salem Road. That's in Union County. Again, just a couple of progress photos, pipeline installation on the left. So this is in Stanley County near Plank Road. Pretty typical cut-and-cover operation. So they'll clear that right-of-way, go in, do any blasting work that they need to, to make sure that the excavator can dig through the rock, excavate that rock. They lay the pipe, bed it in, cover it with soil, backfill it, and then it's just a rolling progression. And on the right here, you can see the hydraulic control structure. And one of the important features on the raw water transmission main is that it's actually comprised of two sections. One of them is 42 inches in diameter, and it's a pressurized line. That's 25 miles of it. So it pumps all the way from Lake Tillery, 25 miles, and it hits this hydraulic control structure. The remaining five miles that goes to the plant is, one, it's a larger diameter, it's 54-inch, and it's gravity-fed, so it's no longer pressurized. And this is what that, that hydraulic control structure is. It's essentially an air gap in the system. So that, that work has been complete. You can see here the formwork on the interior, and the exterior has all been completed.
John, speak with them.
How many miles is that project, the, the complete, the raw water line?
The raw water transmission main is a total of 30 miles. It's 20, roughly 25 miles of 42-inch and five miles of 54-inch pipe.
And what's the cost on that?
The overall GMP for the project is 146, or 149.7 million dollars, and that includes all the work at the intake site.
So 149.7 million, and that's, that's the pipeline and the intake?
Yes, sir.
So, okay.
That's the Phase II construction cost.
And 30, is 30 miles long?
Yes, the raw water transmission main is 30 miles in length.
Okay, thank you.
So on the finished water side of things, again, very similar, similar approach here. We've got a fixed site, which is the water treatment plant. You can see that here in the upper right. And then in the lower left, again, the finished water transmission main. Again, the color scheme's the same. Green is complete and yellow is underway. So you can see the entire finished water transmission main is underway in one way or another with a section generally east of the bypass where that, that installation has been complete. Total contract price, or total contract limit of 119.2 million, and this is comprised of the 117.9 million GMP price and a $1.3 million contingency allowance. We have had a change order, as, as Manager Watson noted, and this was really for just coordination with that 762 zone or east-side transmission main. The lion's share of that cost was associated with electrical gear. So we, rather than having two generators on site, we upsized so we would only have one. It really simplifies that transition if you do have line power failure. We are dealing with medium voltage electrical gear. So it's a fairly large standalone generator, and it will allow us to run basically half the treatment plant as well as the pumps for the 853 and the 762 zone. So that was the lion's share of that cost. There were some other site improvements or site modifications that needed to be made just to facilitate getting that pipeline off the project for that future, excuse me, off the site for that future project. And presently, the schedule on the finished water side is running about six weeks behind schedule. So we're kind of neck and neck, about six, six to eight weeks behind the targeted GMP schedule. But the projects are still in alignment, which is the important piece.
John, what's the size of that holding tank that's on the left-hand side there?
That is a 6-million-gallon raw water storage tank.
Six, 6-million gallons?
Yes, sir. And the finished water transmission main is 36-inch diameter ductal iron pipe. So just to give you an idea of how far we've really come on this project, we started construction on the water treatment plant site in earnest in January of '21. And what you see here is just the cleared site. They've got the erosion control set up and a pad cleared for where the job trailers are going to go. You've got New Salem Road in the front end in your foreground of the picture. You're generally looking south on the property. Fast forward to January of '22, and you can see how much has come up out of the ground. So you've got that 6-million-gallon raw water storage tank on the left-hand side. As you go straight up, you can see the finished water storage tank in the background, kind of in the central, central portion of that, that photo frame. You can see the, the admin building, the treatment train itself. There's the finished water pumping facilities and the transfer pumping facilities at the back end there. And then in, kind of in the next third of the picture, you see the maintenance building as well as the chemical building and the start of what is the main electrical building. Up in the far, far right of the photo, you can see the reclamation basins that are part of the water treatment plant as well. So really come a long way in the past year under construction. Taking a closer look, you can see the, the focus now is getting the buildings up and getting those closed in so that the trades can come in and do the interior work that's necessary. So you can see the admin building, the structural steel going up, same thing on the chemical building. And they're also working on wrapping up the, the process train. And what you see on the left here is the filter gallery. So they're getting the formwork in place to pour, pour that floor slab that goes over that piping so that building over the filters can be erected. And then the right two photos you see here are of the maintenance building where the structural steel has gone up, and you can actually see that they're starting to put the wall panels up. So it's really starting to take shape out there. One of the neat things that, that was completed here in January was getting the roof on the finished water storage tank. So unlike the raw water storage tank, this is potable water, so it's got to be enclosed from the environment. So what you see is just an aerial shot on the right where you can see the vents. Those are the five of them at various points of the compass around the roof. Concrete's brought in, pumped up onto the roof, and they actually had a crew up on there, up on top of that tank finishing out the concrete. So that, that's all been completed. And there's generally, the, the finished water tank itself is generally complete. There's a little bit of work left to do on the interior, but for all intents and purposes.
How many million gallons is the finished water, John?
The finished water is a million and a half. And similar to the, the raw water transmission main, they're also working on the finished water transmission main. So on the left here, you can see a pipeline corridor. Again, it's been cleared. A little bit different approach here. Rather than going in and blasting, or rather than going in and blasting like they are on the raw water side, they've got a machine that comes in, and they actually pre-trench. So it'll chew through just about anything, makes a couple of passes. It's, it's like a ditch witch on steroids. The thing's huge. But it goes through, clears that, clears that alignment, and then the pipe crew comes back, and they're able to just excavate for that and install the pipe and backfill. On the right here, you can see the, an open-cut crossing. This is Sykes Mill Road. So they've, they've gone across the road. There's a casing pipe in place. Finished water pipe has been pushed through there, and they're just compacting that subgrade, getting ready to put the pavement back. And you can see them putting the pavement back here on the, on the right, so several lifts of asphalt, getting that road back open for service. And as I said, this is one of the locations where we do connect the existing distribution system. And what you see on the left here is, is a typical fitting for that. So it's a fabricated fitting. It's 36, and the outlet in this case is eight inches. So once the transmission main has been tested, they'll connect that over to the existing system. In addition to the traditional cut-and-cover operation, they are also working on what is the last of the trenchless crossings. This one is the crossing of the Monroe Bypass, and they are set up with the, the machine on the west side, advancing that towards the east. Once this is complete, that'll be the last of the trenchless work that needs to be done for this side of the project. They, they've been at it for a couple of weeks so far and anticipate to keep working on that for the next couple of weeks. So with that, I said lots of words there about the projects. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them, or I can go right on through into the, into the budget and schedule.
Any questions? Okay, proceed.
So on the budget, I've, I've talked about some numbers. At the GMP, across both projects, we had, like I said, $274.1 million across both projects with a contingency or escalation allowance of $2.7 million. They yielded a total of $276.8. And that's where we are today. So we are within the programmed budget for both sides of the projects. The overall program budget, as I said, is just under $304 million, and that's because we've got roughly $27 million allocated across other items of work. So program management, those are professional services to assist the county with the engineering and construction oversight of the program, fiber optic communications, so all these facilities can communicate with each other, as well as all the necessary costs associated with easement, land acquisition, permitting, legal, inter-local agreement costs, et cetera. And what you see there is, at the time of GMP, this was at 303.8. As of today, we're looking at roughly 303.9. And that's because we're projecting a slight overrun in land acquisition costs. As you can see from the table there, that represents about a 2% increase from the baseline cost for that line item. In the context of the overall program, you're talking about 300ths of a percent. So for all intents and purposes, we are on budget. It's also important to note that these activities aren't complete, so it's a moving target. As we get more of the, the acquisitions are closed out, that number gets more refined. So looking at the, the Phase II costs, so the actual construction piece of it in terms of cash flow, what you're seeing here is the gray vertical bars are what was expected to be spent on a month-over-month basis. And the S-curve you're seeing in gray with the square boxes on it is the cumulative expenditure over the, the life of the project. And then the green bars, vertical bars, are what we actually have spent to date, month over month. And the blue line you can see there is the actual cumulative expenditures. What you're seeing here is a trend where we've spent less than we thought we would in the time that's elapsed so far. And the primary reason for this is because there's about a two-month delay on the project. So if you look at that blue line at the bottom and just shift it over two months, you can see it's pretty much tracking right where it should be. Since we're behind a little bit on the project, what you're going to see going forward is that trend line, or the blue line on the bottom, that slope of that line's generally going to increase a little bit compared to what was planned. And eventually, as you get out towards the bend in that projected S-curve, they're going to match back up. So that's what we're expecting to see. Keep skipping ahead two slides. I apologize for that. So on the overall schedule, as I've mentioned, we're running about one and a half to two months behind. What you're seeing on this slide is the light and dark blue are the contract completion dates, substantial and final. And then the brown- brown and red are where we are today. So you can see that that shifted roughly two months. And the, the important takeaway from this slide is that the raw water intake and pump station, that schedule is what's driving the overall program schedule. And the reason is because we have to be able to provide raw water to the water treatment plant in order for it to go through its startup paces. So if that project's delayed, hence the finished water startup is delayed as well. Neither of the pipeline portions of the project are expected to be on the critical path of the project. They're both going to have plenty of float in them, and they're expected to be completed well ahead of the individual facilities. Any questions on the budget or schedule?
Oh, you know, I'll remind our commissioners, is the line going over to Wingate, that's called the 7, what?
762 Zone Transmission Main, or you can refer to it as the East Side Transmission Main.
Right. And that's something a lot of us was interested in. And you said it's in the design phase now?
Yes, sir.
When would it be ready to present to us, to look at as far as putting it out to bid?
Well, we could, we wouldn't be able to put it out to bid until such time as completion of the water treatment plant were imminent.
Right.
So that, that's at least 16 to 18 months out. So as, as far as where exactly it is, design encompasses a lot of things, as you all know. So when I say something's in design, that could be the beginning, or we could be closing up and, and right at the point where we'd be bidding a project out. So I, I'd be happy to look into that and get back to you.
But going over to Wingate, that was a big part of making sure we had adequate water everywhere, I believe.
That is correct. In, in the interim, the, the overall Yadkin project will feed that area through the existing 16-inch line at Old Camden.
Right.
Until such time as that 24-inch main is in place, and then that 16-inch feed that goes to the south, that'll be used as more of an emergency backup to the primary 24-inch.
But we've got two tanks in that area, too, that we need. It would be nice to be able to put water in there as, as soon as we could, wouldn't it?
We do put water in those.
I'm talking about, but is it, I'm just hoping it'll grow. Commissioner Rushin?
Thank you. I think what he's talking about is like the 16-inch line that goes up Highway 218, feeds the water tank at Highway 218, almost at the Mecklenburg County line. So, so the 16, until you get ready for, I guess, major growth or something, that, that larger line wouldn't maybe be needed. Or unless we were providing water for a poultry plant, something of that nature, maybe. But I, there's an existing line that goes up to 2, 218. I don't know if it's 16 or 12. I think it's 16. It goes all the way over to that tank from Anson County now. Correct?
Okay, I, to clarify, I was speaking about the, the interconnect with the existing 16-inch line on Old Camden Road.
Right.
Now, to, until such time as that 24-inch transmission main is in, that goes down to Wingate, we will be feeding water through that 16-inch connection at New Salem and Old Camden. It'll go south, back through our current facility at Olive Branch, the pump station there, basically coming back through there to feed the 762 zone.
Right.
So we'll be supplying that area with Yadkin water from day one. But it'll take some time to build the, the 24-inch line and get that in service.
I guess what I'm trying to say is, we've been, some of us have kind of been like a bullfroar. We wouldn't move. But on that line, that was one that we added, moved it up on the long-range plan. So the day, the time, the day comes that we can do that, if I'm here, I'll be in favor of it, so.
Understood. John, just to, just to clarify, at, at Old Camden, we will be pushing water south toward Wingate Marshville, filling those tanks and filling and servicing the 762 through that pipe. Currently, that water runs from south to north, I, generally.
Generally speaking, yes. We, we pull water from Anson. As, as typical operations, we pull water from Anson, and then it's pumped from the booster station up to the Highway 218 tank. With the Yadkin project online, that operation is, is essentially reversed.
Right.
So we're, we're pulling water from the north, and it, it flows by gravity back into the system.
But from Camden Road up to 218, to the water tank there, we're continuing to send water north to the 218 tank at the same time.
Yes.
So basically, water, instead of water all flowing in one direction, when it gets to Camden Road, it's going to diverge, and water's going south to serve the 762, and water's going north up to 218.
That is correct. It's a T-intersection.
I apologize for the confusion. You know, the more we're around you engineers, we get to thinking, we are most engineers, so we try to help you solve the problem. I'm, I'm taking up time. I'm sorry.
That's quite all right. Glad I could provide a little bit of clarity on that. So fun fact, and this is, this is my closeout here. So we approved the GMPs back in July of 2020, and gave notice to proceed to the teams in August, late August, early September. So at that time, you know, there was a certain cost associated with the overall program. And one of the things that we, we did as an exercise was, we went back and we looked at what the pipeline costs were as part of that GMP. And we, we just looked at materials. And what we found was, at the time of GMP, across both projects, you were looking at a cost of about $53.3 million, and that was for the materials. If you were to do that today, that, those same materials would cost just over $19 million more. So in the year and a half that we've been underway, you've seen a 36% jump. That's what this represents, just in the cost of the basic materials, the cost to produce it, transport it, and get it to a point where it can be installed. So the takeaway from all that is that early decisions save us money. So we, we could not have timed the Yadkin project much better than we did, in light of the current economic conditions. So I just wanted to share that with you. Other than that, that's all I've got for you tonight.
Commissioner Simpson?
Thanks, John, for that presentation. If you will take just a minute, I know myself and Commissioner Helm serve on sort of the liaison group, and we meet sort of on a quarterly basis with the folks from Norwood, and talk about the project along with the consultants that we work with. Mentioned just briefly the communication effort and the, the attempt. This is a big project. People like Dennis said they were looking for Loch Ness Monster over there or something. A lot of talk, and you see things happening. And we've made every effort to inform the public, to provide opportunities for them to find information on the project. So just mention briefly a little bit about that.
Sure. The, the program as a whole, we've had a, I would say, a robust communications effort from the get-go. So this, this goes back, I mean, hop in your Wayback machine. You can go back to 2013, when the interlocal agreement was, was executed with the town of Norwood, and the ball really started rolling on this project. But we, we have made every effort, as the project has moved through its very, various phases, to communicate with the public. So we had, at the initial onset, we had public meetings on the project, just inviting everybody who was in the conceptual corridor to come and talk to us about concerns that they may have about where things were going to be and what we needed to know. Tried to solicit that input from the community. We've had continual engagement with the town of Norwood, so that's been on a quarterly basis, generally speaking, subject to availability, of course. But there, there's communication between the political leadership on the project, day-to-day outreach. Both of the contracting teams have business cards, and they hand those out to people. And that directs folks to the project website, which is actively maintained and updated based on where we are in the, the overall scheme of the project. It also gives them a hotline that they can call. So if there's an issue, it gives them a ready phone number that is logged, categorized, and responded to by the appropriate personnel. You know, beyond that, we, we do news, we do, excuse me, newsletters, social media posts, generally anything that we can brainstorm in order to better communicate the value of this project to the community. Thank you, John.
Commissioner Rushin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, I seem to remember a cost of around $30 million on the finished water line, just the line. And I thought it was a similar cost to that line that was coming in from Norwood. And you said 147 million, but, you know, that's the, the plant there, that's the intake center. You know, is, is that cost closer to 30 or 40 million dollars for the actual water line going through the ground?
So generally speaking, the, the raw water infrastructure project, so it's comprised of the intake pump station, and then the raw water transmission main. The overall cost for that transmission main is roughly 92 to 93 million dollars. It's the lion's share of the cost of the project. The, the intake itself is, is a much smaller share of that.
Okay.
The, the total cost of that project, and I would have to go back and, and get you solid numbers on that, but if memory serves, that's kind of the split.
And, and I'm, and I'm interested in that cost per mile, because of already a presentation we had on running water lines down the road, because that, those pictures were impressive of how much dirt's being moved, how much land had to be acquired, things like that. And then I'm kind of comparing it to what it costs us per mile to run a water line to serve a customer, and see what the comparison there is. Mr. Manager, if you could possibly get that information for me, I'd appreciate that. Because, you know, it seems like the cost comparison of doing a mile of drinkable water versus the cost of this is, is a kind of, I don't know, it looks, it looks like it's kind of close to me. But, you know, I'm looking at $5 million per mile if you used, if you add all the facilities to it versus less, you know, about $3 million per mile for running this water across there. And then maybe what's our cost to run it down the road to serve customers?
So just to make sure that I'm clear with what you're, you're asking. You're, you're asking for a cost comparison for the amount, a cost per mile
Mm-hmm.
to run the raw water line compared to the cost per mile
To run clean drinking water.
To run clean drinking water and a distribution?
Right. Like we've talked about with, with our water lines for the, that we're talking about using the CARES Act funding for.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we, we saw that huge number of $374 million for how many miles? You know, how, first, that's kind of what I'm trying to get at, is cost per mile, because it looks like that cost.
Right. I, I remember your concern over the cost per mile.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I could ask the board to remove item number 22070. We are not prepared to make that presentation this evening, and we will be prepared at the first meeting in March to do that. But circumstances have risen, and we are not prepared to deliver that presentation this evening.
Mr. Kay, do we need to vote, or just remove it?
You can just skip over it.
Okay. All right. 22069, Board Discussion of Various Procedures Used to Appoint Advisory or Regulatory Board Members. Mr. Manager?
I'm going to refer to Kay on this, with Mr. Helm, who asked for some information relative to board procedures used to appoint members to advisory and regulatory boards. Mr. Kay has looked at that information, and he is prepared to summarize that for you, so that you can then take that information and engage in conversation with yourselves if there might be additional information as a result.
Commissioners, thank you. I am, as the manager said, here this evening to respond to your request for more information on how you might be able to enhance your board and committee appointment procedures for certain committees. Effectively have four things to say to you, and then I will sit down, and you all can deliberate either here or amongst yourselves after the meeting, as you see fit. I'm going to talk with you about what your current boards and committees are. Second, I'm going to talk about the smaller set of committees that you might consider and enhance procedure for. Then I'm going to talk about your current procedures, and then some things that you might do to beef that up, should you so choose. So the first thing is, you'll see the current list of boards and committees there. It's quite a large list. You can see that at various times during the year, you make appointments to those, and members serve in their various functions. I would say that this entire list, as well as some more detail as to what the boards do, and their, how their membership is composed, is available on our website as well, for anyone who wants to take a look. Amongst those boards, there are just a handful that rise to the level of boards that have a little bit more influence because of the way your advisory or approval structures function. There is no magic to this list of boards. You can select anything to go on or off of here. Some of the things that we used were the level of their advisory approach, sometimes the levels of expertise that are mandated by statute, sometimes whether these boards are required by statute, or whether there are things that, that we have created here in Union County. And one of the, the boards, for example, that is not on there is your Economic Development Commission. Because of the recent change that has taken place, and the methods of appointment that you've already gone through for that, generally, it's members of this board that go on to that group. But that's certainly something you could change in the future, should, should you want to do that. Your current procedure is in your Rule of Procedure Number 32, and I have summarized it here. It's a little bit more wordy than that in your rules. But basically, you send out notice to the community by publishing notice in a variety of different ways, on a bulletin board, in a newspaper. You can run it in a local cable TV station, or other reasonable notification designed to notify the public. You can include any or all of those. They just need to be received by the clerk, not later than 5:00 PM on the Tuesday before the meeting, at which you're going to start making appointments. And then your process right now does not speak to assessing particular qualifications or digging in more deeply to some things. You have freedom to do that right now, should you so choose, or not. Basically, you just open the floor to nominations and put forward some names and debate them. And then you call nominees and take a vote. And when you get a majority of votes, sometimes it's much more simple than that. It doesn't always follow this much complicated procedure in the way that you do that approval. But should the need arise, that is the process. Here are a list of things that you might consider that we have taken from other boards across the state that they use, some things that we have suggested or brainstormed simply to think about. And the first principle to keep in mind is that the Board of County Commissioners always makes the appointment. There's no other group that makes the appointment. This full board makes the appointment. The second is that in the process of creating the application, you might consider whether to add some additional targeted questions. If there's specific levels of expertise or involvement, or a track record that you would like to see, for certain boards and committees, you can request information on that in the application. And we would certainly be glad to provide you with some options in that area if you want to explore that. But then secondly, in the applicant vetting process, the interview process, if you will, you could create an ad hoc Board of Commissioners small group to review it. Obviously, you can't go any larger than groups of two, so that becomes a little bit cumbersome. But that is in order to comply with the state's open meetings laws, and make sure we are doing everything within the public eye that requires it. You could consider more than one ad hoc group. You could consider a, a per-committee group, or you could have it for all designated committees. In other words, you could say, this is the group for Committee A that we're going to employ, and this is the group for Committee B and Committee C and so forth. Or you could say, here's a group that we're going to use for all of these board or committee appointments. You could, all You could also ask for existing committee members. That is the group of the committee spot that you're trying to fill, there are going to be existing committee members on there, you could ask for their advice and input. Or some subset of that committee. They could interview applicants and present recommendations to the board for your consideration. You could also identify some designated stakeholders that you want to be a part of that review, and they could be on the board, off the board, on the committee, off the committee. And then lastly, you could adopt multiple layers of review with two or more of those elements above for use in vetting candidates. So for example, you could use a part of a committee of existing members to review applications, interview them, and then you could add an ad hoc group of yourselves to interview them, groups of two or more, and then come together with a recommendation. It's really up to you, but they ultimately fall into one of those two buckets. Either the candidate ask presenting more information to you, and then secondly, you drilling down as deeply as you want to drill, either yourselves or with some other group of persons participating in that process. That said, it is your time for discussion and direction to staff, whatever you think you can give that in this meeting, or you can think about it and come back to us at a later time.
Commissioner Hales.
Yes, I I asked for this because I had the privilege of participating in a review for the DHS Board, and it was extremely effective process. We had a number of applicants, and unfortunately, a lot of times on our board, we don't have a number of applicants. But I think through the process that it was evident we got the most qualified individuals to sit on that board. So I see value in that, especially in Board of Adjustments, Planning Board, and your other suggestions are appropriate as well. I'd I'd like for the board to pursue that. I mean, it's, you know, it's just so happened on the, I was on the DHS Board at that time, so I was a commissioner representative there, and the other two individuals were on the board. And we went through a process and each rate ranked applicants, and it matched perfectly every one of us. And so I think it's a good process because, like the DHS Board, Michelle will tell you how critical that board is, and we saw it just now in the past during this pandemic, and some of our other boards are equally critical to the operation of the county.
Go ahead, Commissioner Rushing.
Thank you. With the Health and Human Services Board kind of being a different, I mean, the qualifications that are required there, some are like JCPC Board, if you have to have qualifications to be on certain, you know, if there's certain requirements that they would have to meet. There's there are boards where there are requirements, and that's listed. We on the Parks and Recreation Board, we used to have a place for, had to be a handicapped individual that used park services or that for access to park services. But as far as the us appointing them, you know, by a committee or two, I really see where that could be a problem. For example, like tonight, you know, we had some rezonings, some are some are supported by the Planning Board, some are not, but we get the final say in that, and we can discuss it, just like, you know, Commissioner Williams had his difference with with the other four of us tonight, and I could have been different on something. But we we don't really have a lot of problems with the way that we appoint boards now. We're, you know, the the way we appoint boards now in the county, for example, let's say that you had developers that were, or commissioners more development friendly, and they only recommended developers be on the planning board. I know that the public would have a problem with that, of saying, wait a minute, you know, why is this board so heavy with developers? Well, they're very qualified to make, you know, recommendations for zoning and planning. However, you know, the people have their say in it too. So so I don't know that, I don't, I don't know that I want to change too much the direction we're going in or that we've been doing. If we had more problems with it, you know, maybe I would be willing to look at that, but, you know, I just don't see all the, I like having a say, and and usually we all agree. Sometimes we might not, you know, there might be somebody, again, that two commissioners really liked that the other three find so distasteful that.
But it's not, you know, the the group made a recommendation to this board, so whatever process it go through, it would come as a recommendation to this board.
That's what I, that's what I understood, Commissioner Hales, after he told me the process.
So it's not going to go on the consent agenda like?
No, no, no.
But and it would, and and actually, one thing I picked up at the school board, if you have a discipline issue with children, they set up groups of board members, and so we could have groups of two, and the chairman, whoever it was at the time, if it was AG, you know, we could assign Jerry and Stoney, or Jerry and me, or me, you know, if it's legal, we would assign David, not that that's, he's limited to that, David and Richard. And they would be the ones that would actually meet with the people, and then they could come back and communicate.
Well, generally, the way I do it, I mean, the way I, the advice I take in it, is like if Jerry comes in and nominates two people for the AG Advisory Board, I tend to follow his recommendation because he has to serve with it, and he and he knows the board. More like if somebody, like when you come in with Health and Human Services, you know, I tend to listen to the person that's serving on that board. You know, I tend to not not even make nominations until that person speaks up, but I tend to nominate JCPC members or, you know, people that I'm on the boards of. So so again, I, not not a big problem with this, except for, you know, I just, I just don't want it to be two commissioners picking the person. Out of respect, well, you'd normally support each other's recommendations, and, but I don't, I've seen it the other way.
Well, you know, I tell you, with the way, the way we had this one, I happen to be a commissioner on it. We had two other members that were followed under, fell under different categories, and I would, I would say the same thing. If we're going to do the AG Advisory, I mean, we need to have some AG represented on there too, that they can help us ask the right questions, make sure the motivation to be on that board is 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 right. And sometimes the answers you get, it uncovers that maybe that individual's not the person to be on that board. I mean, I don't have any problem with if one commissioner was in each committee, and then we have some more, and that, you know, that'll leave you each two commissioners.
What what if we, what if we did it that way? What if maybe the commissioner on the board is responsible for interviewing the the people and and maybe making that recommendation? That way, again, that that we, we're just making a recommendation, we're not telling them that's who's going to be on the board, but that might prevent any kind of committee from having to even be formed correct.
That's correct, Commissioner Rushing. By having one board member effectively do the interviewing, it ensures that it's merely a recommendation that they're making. At the end of the day, this board as a whole has to make all of these appointments. I don't think you could deputize a smaller group of yourselves to make that appointment. At best, they can make that recommendation.
And and that prevents that person from having to call, like, like if you have two people, and the trouble we're having is not having enough people apply.
Exactly.
It's not really necessarily to have too many people apply. You had an odd situation, but but like those people could call and talk to the commissioner that's representative on that board. That commissioner could do pluses and minuses, like you're saying, and then show the rest of the board that, you know, that recommendation, and then the board could take it or leave it. But that would be less formal and probably less, less hurt feelings maybe, and and that commissioner has served on that board, I'd have to explain that to the people as well.
Well, the problem is, is, is right now, we do a handwritten, and sometimes they elaborate on their skills and their interests, sometimes they don't. And having the interview process, I think, is what's beneficial, to sit down and have a conversation.
Let's, could I offer a suggestion? Let's put this decision off for two weeks.
Okay.
And and I think what Stoney's wanting and what Richard's wanting, I think, is really the same thing.
Not too different, just less formal and less, you know, like if you and David were on a, well, first of all, if you and David were picking all of them, then you, how would I know, how would you know who I like on Parks and Rec, or how would you know who Jerry likes on the AG Committee? And and so almost a thing where you got to two commissioners, different commissioners to kind of rotate around, and and it might just be easier for that one just to interview those people.
Well, I, I can tell you, if if I was one of the people doing the interview and it was the AG community, I'd want some experienced AG involvement, so I would, you know, I would say, I'd, I'd want the input for some, some of the others too. We came up was, we met before and had had some basic questions, and the various members asked, asked the questions, and asked the same question of all the people that applied. I mean, it was the same script to make sure that, you know, one didn't get preferential treatment and, you know, ask how your family's doing, and that's all we're asking. But I think the process, the process brought out some very interesting information, and I feel comfortable that we, we chose the right candidates that was made a recommendation. I, I'm just saying, I could see that benefit on some of these others, like the Planning Board. You know, Planning, your comment is very correct. You know, we put, we put a major developer on there, and he's, yeah, do the high density, do the high density, do the high density, and it may not be good for the county.
But there's, but there's no problem with that one person having that opinion, as long as the board's evened out. You know, you need, you need people of various opinions, just like our board. We have people of various opinions, sometimes we all agree, and sometimes we, two of us will disagree, and three of us will agree.
What if we put all realtors on the Planning Board? Guess what we'd have, right?
That's happened in the past, or, you know, it's been heavily loaded in the past with builders and developers, and the complaints started from the community. So, you know, even, and think, think about this in the, in the two weeks we're going to take, because I agree, maybe take a couple of weeks to look at it.
I'm fine with that.
Think about maybe the, maybe the staff, some that we have actually, like assistant managers might interview those people.
No problem.
And and get the.
But it's the interview process that I think, sit down and talk to people about what their, their intent on being on the board is, what they want to accomplish, and what they want for the county.
Okay, we'll.
Commissioners, if I may, just as a point of clarity for staff, would it be your preference that we take and summarize what you've said and try to bring it back in front of you in some sort of crystallized way for next week, or would you like to just ruminate on it amongst yourselves and and talk about it?
I don't think you could write that book in two weeks, but, but you can try.
I, I think it's, it's good for us to communicate among ourselves and share opinions and and we, we've been known to change each other's mind, so.
Right. That's exactly right. I think, I think that's what it'll do, this pre-interview by two commissioners, and I have no trouble with letting Richard and Stoney be the, the driving force of deciding who does what, you know? Just trying to get people to, that want to serve on these committees to come talk to y'all and.
Well, and again, I, like I said, with, on the AG Committee or, or on, well, on the, on the water, you know, if we ought to put some people on a.
Richard said he would acquiesce to Jerry on the AG selection, you know?
I wouldn't mind doing my own committees, like having a, you know, like the committees I have to serve on Parks and Rec, or, or, you know, JCPC or whatever, doing some kind of interview if we had a template of what we can and can't ask, because I don't want to get on there and ask how many kids they got if I can't ask that question, or anything, anything that I don't, you know, Jason, you probably need to give us some ideas, or Mark, you know, what can we ask people? What are we, because I'm sure there's some questions we should not ask people legally, and maybe have that format for all of us to use and contact those.
And we went through that exercise to make sure we weren't asking inappropriate.
And as they said about Forrest, Commissioner Simpson's getting ready to say something, so.
No, I was just going to make a point about the AG Committee, there's, and this could be the same with other committees, there are specifics in their charter, statute, or whatever that specifies that you have to be represented by townships and that kind of thing. So the AG Committee does vet applications prior to them coming before this board, so there is input from the committee itself.
Well, they've had commissioner leadership for a long time, too.
You were pecking at that on and off speaker.
It wouldn't come on.
Okay. Well, that was a good discussion, and we'll put it on next agenda. Okay, manager comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just a couple of reminders prior to the board's regular meeting on March the 7th. A joint meeting with South Piedmont Community College has been scheduled for 4:00 PM for the purpose of receiving their capital construction needs and associated funding requests related to those needs for the coming year.
Say that date again, please, sir. Say that date again.
March the 7th.
March 7th.
And that's at 4:00 PM prior to your regular meeting.
Thank you.
March the 14th, reminder, at 3:00 PM, we have our next budget workshop. And of interest, several months ago, board members brought to my attention that perhaps the county had responsibility for the old county home cemetery, and staff has looked into that, and as it turns out, the county still owns that property. And very little has been done to keep it up or maintain it since the early 1970s. Since bringing that to staff's attention, I just want the board to know that we have completed a land survey of the property boundaries, we have communicated with the neighbors, we have marked, had those property lines marked, and we are in the process of clearing away the undergrowth that was pretty heavy and pretty thick on that property. Some 170 individuals are buried there. They were all wards of Union County at one point or another between early 1900s and the late 1940s, and we'll continue with that project, and I'll be bringing you a more formal update in the near future. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things, I'd like to, to say a special thanks to Pastor Marty Benfield. He's with Valley Church of Indian Trail, did a great job, and so if you're in that area or looking for a church, certainly look him up. The other thing I'd mention is, I would like to thank the manager and administrative staff for the little tour we had put together today. We got the opportunity to take a first look at the sheriff's facilities and expansion out there at the jail, along with the emergency services here over on, near the Health and Human Services Building. Both of those facilities are futuristic, they're cutting edge, they're going to make Union County proud, and it certainly goes to show that when we put those five tenants that we stand behind as a county, public safety number one, it certainly is evident through what we saw today. So I commend you on that, and look forward to those being completed.
Commissioner Rushing.
No comment.
Commissioner Hales.
I'd just like to say congratulations to Catherine Brown. She will be missed, and I think, I know that she helped this board more than a lot of people realize when, as we prepare for public meetings and interviews and things like that. She did a fantastic job. I feel confident with Liz still around, will be in good hands, but we wish her well. That's all.
Commissioner Williams.
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Before I, I've got, I need to announce that we're advertising a vacancy for an unexpired term on the Planning Board because of a resignation, and I want, and it's already, I believe, been posted on our board out back, well, it will be very shortly, and it's for an unexpired term that ends 4/19/2023. The guy, Russell Wing retired for some health reasons, and a very good friend of mine, and a lot of you know him too, and friends with him. Jerry, don't shoot me, but on that upcoming, Jerry says he's the funniest person in the world when you get him one-on-one. He, I asked him, I said, I'll let you sit at the front of the table with the South Piedmont because you're on that trustee, you're a trustee and you're a commissioner. He said, how? He said, how about I come in with my face painted like Braveheart, you know, blue on one side and black on the other? And then he went on to say they had been looking at the Simpson Family Crest, and he said they traced it back to William Wallace from that movie Braveheart, and I said, man, Braveheart on one side and Belk stores on the other, and-
Mr. Chairman, can I-
Yeah.
I think we've traced ours back to Lone Shenix.
But he says some of the funniest stuff. That's why when I saw where he was going, any rebuttal before we-
I think you've set it up.
Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. We're going, not adjourned, we're going to go back into closed session, so we'll go back in there, and I'll put us back in session.